I'm in at 37 in the last turn Guam is called back from recess. And I see to us and good morning colleagues. It appears we do not have a quorum. We have one, two, three, four. I want to thank Minority Leader Blos, Vice Speaker Tina Munya Barnes, Senator Barnett, Senator Perez for being here this morning. But we don't have enough to have a quorum, even with me. It's only five. So we're going to have to wait for a quorum. And if the Sergeant of Arms could please call the senators for our nine o'clock session. See, this is Massey will be on recess until we have a quorum. We're back from recess. Thank you for making a quorum. We now have a quorum. We will proceed. Yesterday, we left off, we were under motions. Are there any other motions? If not, then we will proceed to legislative concurrences. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved to place in the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture hereby reports out the nomination of Jolene Ugon, M.D., to serve as a member physician representative of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners with a recommendation says to report out only.
Yes. Is that a motion to place in the voting file?
Motion to place it on the
Voting file.
Voting file, yeah.
There's a motion to place a nomination of Jolene Ugon, M.D. As a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Manana Sejulis, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I moved to place in the voting file from the Committee of Human Resources, Hagania Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology, Federal and Foreign Affairs. The nomination of Carlos Madrid Alvarez Pioneer, Ph.D., to serve as a member of the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners with a recommendation to do confirm. Please.
On the motion to place the nomination of Carlos Madrid Alvarez Pioneer, Ph.D. To the voting file, is there any objection?
No objection.
Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Committee on Education, Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Manana Sejulis, Madam Speaker, good morning to the people of Guam, Beba Betnis. I moved to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts. The nomination of Lisa A. Bazza Cruz, E.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification with a recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination of Lisa A. Bazza Cruz, E.D.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Education Certification to the voting files. Any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I moved to place from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture hereby reports on the nomination of Nathaniel B. Berg, M.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners with a recommendation to report out only to be put in the voting file.
On the motion to place Dr. Nathaniel B. Berg as a member of the Guam Board of Medical Examiners to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker, from the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Hereby reports on the nomination of Teresa Damian Borja, DPM, FAC, FAS, to serve as a member allied health profession representative of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees with a recommendation to do confirm on the voting file.
On that motion to place a nomination of Teresa Damian Borja to the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. I moved to place in the voting file from the Committee on Education, Public Safety and the Arts. The nomination of Lisa Marie Cooper Nurse, E.D.D., to serve as a member of the Guam Commission for Educator Certification with the recommendation to do confirm.
On that motion to place a nomination of Dr. Lisa Marie Cooper Nurse to the Guam Commission for Education Certification to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. For the Committee on Land, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
This is Massey, Madam Speaker. From the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture hereby reports on the nomination of Maria G. Cruz to serve as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission with a recommendation to report out only. And I make the motion to place it in the voting file.
On that motion to place a nomination of Maria G. Cruz as a member of the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. For the Committee of Hagania Revitalization, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
See, just Massey, Madam Speaker. I moved to place in the voting file from the Committee of Human Resources, Hagania Revitalization, Regional Affairs, Public Libraries, Telecommunications, Technology and Veteran Foreign Affairs. The nomination of Maria Eugenia H. Leon Guerrero to serve as a member of the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners with the recommendation to do confirm, please.
On that motion to place a nomination of Maria Eugenia Leon Guerrero as a member of the Hagania Restoration and Redevelopment Authority Board of Commissioners to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. For the Committee on Health, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
From the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture. Hereby reports on the nomination of Suzanne D. Lobatan, DNP, MN, RN, COH, NS, to serve as a member of the Guam, to serve as a member in the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees as a Guam Nursing Association Representative with a recommendation to do confirm. I moved to make, place it in the voting file.
On the motion to place in the voting file, the nomination of Suzanne Lobatan as a member of the Guam as a member of the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Trustees to the voting files, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. For the Committee on Revenue and Taxation, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
From the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics and Research and Planning, I move to place the nomination of Candy C. Okuhama to serve as a member of the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board with a recommendation to do confirm.
On the motion to place in the voting file the nomination of Candy Okuhama for the Alcoholic Beverage Control Board, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized for the Committee on Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place in the voting file from the Committee of Infrastructure, Economic Development, Simon Sanchez High School, Disability Services, Self-Determination and Historic Preservation Housing, Public and Accountability in the Guam Build Up, the nomination of Shinshaku Tyra to serve as a member of the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors with the recommendation to do confirm. Please.
On that motion to place the nomination of Shinshaku Tyra to the Guam Economic Development Authority Board of Directors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. For the Committee on Fire, Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place the appointment of Darren D. Burrier as the Fire Chief of the Guam Fire Department to the voting file.
On that motion to place the nomination of Darren D. Burrier to serve as Fire Chief of the Guam Fire Department to the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you again, Madam Speaker. From the Committee of Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Terrorism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens, I move the appointment of Rosie R. Tainatango to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.P. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority.
According to the clerk, that's not on our agenda yet, so that will have to be under motions to place it on the agenda.
Notwithstanding, Madam Speaker, I, I understood that the committee reports were completed and that it cleared and that I had mentioned earlier that it was going to go through. I would have done it in motions, but I was told that it was cleared.
It's cleared by Committee on Rules, but it wasn't placed on the agenda in our Committee on Rules meeting, so we just need to put it on the agenda. We can do that back on motions if anyone wants to make a motion to go back to motions.
So since we're at the end, Madam Speaker, notwithstanding, to go back to motions, please.
Is there any objection to going back to motions? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're back on motions. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Again, from the Committee on Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Terrorism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens, I move the appointment of Rosie R. Tainatango to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority.
On that motion to add to our agenda under legislative concurrence, the nomination of Rosie Tainatango for the Guam International, the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries, so that name is added to our agenda. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, if I may, I do have quite a number, so I will just proceed. On, from that same committee, Madam Speaker, the appointment of Brian J. Bomba to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority, to the agenda.
On that motion to add the nomination of Brian Bomba to the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority to our agenda, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The appointment of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority, this again comes from that same committee.
On that motion to place the nomination of Lucy Alcorn to the A.B. Want Pat International Airport, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This one is for the appointment, let me read the, from that same committee, Madam Speaker, the appointment of John P. Durking to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Department of Parks and Recreation, to the agenda, please.
On that motion to place the nomination of John Durking to the Parks and Recreation Commission, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Madam Speaker, this is the last one. From that, from the same committee, the appointment of Edward F. Ujoa to serve as a member of the Board of Regents for the University of Guam, on the agenda, please.
Does the motion place the nomination of Edward Ujoa to the Board of Regents of the University of Guam onto our session agenda? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Are there any other motions?
Madam Speaker, at this time, do I go ahead and move it down?
Yeah, well, now we, if there are no other, are there any other motions? If not, then we will move to legislative concurrence. Vice Speaker, you are recognized on these nominations.
Madam Speaker, I move, on legislative concurrence, the appointment of Rosie R. Tainatango to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat International Airport Authority, from the Committee of Maritime Transportation, Air Transportation, Parks, Terrorism, Higher Education and the Advancement of Women, Youth and Senior Citizens.
On the motion to place that nomination in the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On the appointment of Brian J. Bomba to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority, onto the voting file, please.
On that motion to place it to the voting file, nomination of Brian Bomba, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries and that nomination's in the voting file. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, this next one is for the appointment of Lucy M. Alcorn to serve as a member of the Board of Directors for the A.B. Want Pat Guam International Airport Authority, to the voting file, please.
On that motion to place the nomination in the voting files, there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Madam Speaker, this next one is for the appointment of Mr. John P. Durking to serve as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, Department of Parks and Recreation, into the voting file, please.
On the motion to place that nomination into the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
And this would be the last one, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. This would be for the appointment of Edward F. Ujoa to serve as a member of the Board of Regents, University of Guam, from that same committee, to the voting file, please, Madam Speaker.
On that motion to place a nomination into the voting file, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
Madam Speaker.
We have exhausted our legislative concurrence file. We are now moving to consent calendar, oh, sorry, Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Speaker. So I, during that time, I was able to review the committee reports, and I was able to find some errors in the actual, so when I reported, when I made the motion to put it on the voting file for Dr. Jolene Ugon, it's actually to do confirm, not a report out only based on the committee report votes, as well as Nathaniel Berg, those are also to do confirm. So I think there was a couple more that would need to review. Do I have to make the motion to amend the motion at this time?
What others, did you find errors?
Nathaniel Berg and Jolene Ugon, so I didn't get a chance to review everything else.
All right. Is there any objection to proceeding and allowing the clerk to fix our legislative concurrent folder to reflect the committee reports? Senator Taidugui, you are recognized.
I'm sorry, Madam Speaker. If they can repeat again, what is the situation with regards to, are we fixing something from the committee of the whole?
No, sorry. If you look at our agenda, under legislative concurrence.
Right.
It has, it reflects what the recommendation of the committees were. So in a couple instances, it says with a recommendation to report out only, and Senator Perez is saying in her research, it said, the committee report actually said with the recommendation to do confirm. So it's the way it's printed in our agenda that might be in error. We're going to ask the clerks to confirm it and make it accurate.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Speaker, for the clarification.
The clerks is informing me for that these two nominations, it actually was report out only, and that these are correct. So that was on the nomination of Jolene, Dr. Jolene Ugon and Dr. Nathaniel Berg.
Madam Speaker, just to verify then, based on that, just to look over, can we just take a moment's recess?
Sure, we'll take one minute recess. You may confer with the clerks, if you like.
Yes, thank you.
One minute recess.[1261.23]
We're back from recess. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you for that recess and I appreciate the time for the clarification, and I do stand corrected. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, and thank you to the clerks too for clarifying. Senator Barnett, you're recognized.
Sisus Masi, Madam Speaker, at this time, I'd like to make a motion for the body to reconsider the motion to place Dr. Nathaniel Berg's nomination on the agenda.
Onto the voting file, to reconsider that motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there any objection to reconsidering the motion? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. On the motion. The motion was to place the nomination of Dr. Nathaniel Berg, M.D., to the voting file. Is there any objection? There's an objection, all in favor of moving the nomination to the voting file, please raise your hand. Motion fails. We're still on legislative concurrences. Are there any other motions? If not, we are going to move to consent calendar where there are no items, so we will move forward to the second reading file. The first bill on our second reading file is Bill Number 248-37COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. I moved to place Bill 248-37COR as amended by the Committee on Environment, Revenue and Taxation, Labor Procurement, Statistics, Research and Planning into the third reading file, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill 248-37 aims to update the sole source procurement law in order to optimize information technology-related procurement. In speaking with OTEC, the need was highlighted for a comprehensive technology procurement plan due to the increasing reliance on the government of Guam's, on the reliance of Guam on technology, which entails the following considerations included in this bill. The need for a business plan with a cost-benefit analysis to justify the investment, which involves explaining the importance of a clear business plan case that articulates the problem the technology will solve and the value it would bring to the agency and the public. It would discuss the need for a detailed cost-benefit analysis to weigh the potential cost against the expected benefits. The second item is the importance of a business process analysis, so this is all part of a comprehensive technology procurement planning. The importance of a business process analysis, which is, which will optimize operations by explaining how business process analysis can identify inefficiencies and bottlenecks in existing workflows. It would discuss the role of technology in streamlining processes and improving productivity. The third consideration is defining system requirements and technical specifications, ensuring it fits the purpose, which involve emphasizing the criticality of clear and concise system requirements and technical specifications, discuss the need for collaboration between IT professionals and end users to develop accurate requirements. The fourth consideration, which is included in this bill, is developing a comprehensive project plan, which involve managing the implementation process. That involves outlining the importance of a well-defined project plan, including timelines, milestones and resource allocation. It would also discuss the role of effective project management in mitigating risk and ensuring timely delivery. The other item included in this bill is setting clear goals and measuring success. So that entails driving performance and accountability, explain the portance, which will explain the importance of establishing clear business goals and performance metrics. It would discuss the need for regular monitoring and evaluation to track progress and identify areas for improvement. The other important thing that is needed is to secure adequate resources and funding, which is important for procurement. Additionally, procurement for technology goods and services are unique in that they typically offer better pricing for and require a service contract that exceeds a one-year term that is currently allowed in law. These procurements usually carry an average support contract for five years, as is with this new FMIS system, with 10 to 15 years for larger projects. For sole source procurement, this may be especially costly because of shorter duration of a contract and, and because of increased administrative costs, and therefore optimizing these processes could offer the best value for the people of Guam. This amended Bill 248-37 addresses the concerns of Department Administration by ensuring that it only applies to proprietary knowledge and not if there exists open source and free licensing. And it also aims to provide options for extension of sole source procurement, provided that the condition of this proprietary information exists. Bill 248-37 proposes to extend the duration of the initial one-year term with extensions of one year each to initial five, up to five years, with up to five year, two renewals for up to five years each for a cumulative total of 15 years. And so this provides much more flexibility. The determination for the length of sole source contract by the chief procurement officer would be in consultation with the chief technology officer of the Office of Technology, who would undertake all of this analysis that I just described, which is important for a comprehensive planning for technology. And it would filter out the non-competition and simultaneously minimize unnecessary duplication of what this current law exists, which is solicitation every year. Bill 248-37 provides us flexibility to extend contracts as needed, dependent upon this analysis. It also provides a transparency and accountability and prevents the locking in of vendors with the support of the informational technology experts that exist in our government. And Bill 248-37 can be seen in line with federal practices because recently the federal government awarded a 25-year sole source contract, whereas this bill limits it to 15 years. By extending the term of sole source contracts, this will help to streamline solicitation for technology goods and services by eliminating duplication of work and provide the necessary time for future upgrades. As agencies look to upgrade and migrate technology systems, it is critical that the procurement law supports these efforts in obtaining the best value without compromising vital services upon which our community relies upon, which such as the dissemination of SNAP benefits, processing of Medicaid claims and timely tax refunds and others. Bill 248 was created in close collaboration of OTEC and also was amended to address the concerns of Department Administration. In all, it would help to increase the value of what we procure for a very special type of procurement, which is a technology, which involves technology. And I ask the support from my colleagues. Thank you.
Sisus Masi. Senator Perez, on the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senator Taitegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and good morning to my colleagues. Madam Speaker, I just have a couple questions to the good author of the legislation, if she should yield. I believe that if there's anybody to talk about procurement and understanding it, so guidelines and rules and regulations and what you can and cannot do with regards to timelines and, of course, the history of other procurement situations. I know that she's not well-versed on federal side, but, you know, she's very close to it, so I have a couple questions if she can answer them, please.
State your question.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So the question is, with regards to technology and the process of this procurement particularly, what is the biggest difference from what they're allowed to do it from an emergency procurement perspective versus now, what has completely changed to allow, that we need this bill that they can't do through an emergency procurement?
Would the author yield to that question?
Thank you for that question. And so what this bill does, it's, it really, it doesn't change emergency procurement. So should an agency want to turn to emergency procurement, they can, they can do so. But of course, emergency procurement tends to come at a premium cost. And so what this bill does, it really promotes more of the long-term planning for, specifically for technology-related procurement. And so we know some of the pitfalls when we, when, in the past at least, when the government purchased these type of procurements, because we had this sort of lock-in type of mode. And so what this bill does, it really addresses the, I guess, the barriers when it comes to technology, in that it allows greater flexibility, so with the help of the experts. And so I think it doesn't change emergency procurement, it just adds more of a, more of a positive way to approach procurement.
Senator Taitegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I did notice there's an extension in the legislation, actually a couple extensions. So it allows a certain amount of years, I believe it's five years, and then it adds another five years after that, and the ability to add another one, not to exceed 15 years, if I'm not mistaken. And so I'm just wondering, is this the usual situation in procurement and regular procurement to allow this extension? And why is it that we're breaking that up to two different extensions instead of just allowing a 15-year procurement?
Would the sponsor yield to that question?
Very good. Thank you for the question. Yes, I do yield to the question. And so we're dealing with an industry that is fast-changing. And so what can happen, you know, if we award a 15-year, then you're, we're basically going back to the old way, where we're locking in to a certain vendor. When, if technology changes within, you know, within the term of a contract of five years or less, that gives the government an opportunity to go for more value and, you know, basically, you know, should a product not be proprietary anymore and it's open source or it's freely licensed, you know, that saves the government tons of money, which can go into other things. So, yeah, being locked into 15 years is not what OTEC is recommending. They like this bill because there's flexibility to, you know, determine the length of a, of a term. It could be one year. These are up to five years, so it could be a one-year term if they think the technology is moving quickly, or, you know, know, if they, they see that the technology, or they, or for the other thing is that they may need to, you know, look at the budget, right? So how can, they have to look at the funding source as well. So it's really giving them the, the ability to make those determinations with the chief procurement officer. Yeah, considering their, their expertise is in technology, I think it, you know, that this is what they recommended, is to have greater flexibility in, in the terms, the duration of this, this contract.
Senator Taitegui, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and, excuse me, and thank you to the good author of the legislations. But my, my concern here on the, you know, the renewal, every, or, you know, the option to renew, I just don't see the validity of that. I mean, we all know that technology changes. I mean, how many times we've had an Apple, new Apple every other year? It's from 10, nine, or 10, 11, 12, 13. I don't even know what number we are with Apple, you know, because of new innovative stuff that you can do with it that, you know, just makes it better. And that's, and that's one of my biggest concerns is just, you know, why don't we just do five years? And that gives the ability for this individual not to hold, be held that they have to renew with somebody, or there's a contract currently going. I mean, we should be, have the option with new technology changing, new innovative ideas coming up. That means new companies are also playing a part in technology and coming up. So I just, you know, it wasn't, it's actually not a deal breaker, but still, you know, I just, we start allowing these extensions, extensions, you know, it, it kind of defeats a purpose of the ability to, you know, freely bid the next time around after a contract ends, you know, to allow the next person in there. And some people don't even attempt to, knowing that there's an extension on a current contract. So would that hinder other companies? So I just, just wanted to understand that a little bit more, my colleagues understand that about, you know, these extensions. Other than that, you know, I appreciate the good senator looking into technology. I feel that's, that's the new wave that's coming down, and it's going to provide the assistance we need, and even in this body. So I appreciate this legislation, but I do have some reservations. Thank you.
Senator Taitegui, on the bill, is there any other senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill?
We're going to take a one-minute recess.
We're back from recess. Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to set this bill aside till after lunch.
All right, there's a motion to set the bill aside. Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're now on Bill Number 250-37 LS. Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sí, señor presidente. In review of the bill that's uploaded, there were a couple of sections that were misnumbered, and so I'd like to proceed with it in the proper format. So at this point, also, I'd like to address Bill 250-37 after lunch, and I would like to, you know, move to the next bill if possible. Thank you.
Sí, señor presidente. Is there any objection to that motion? If not, Bill 250 will be set aside as well. We're now on Bill Number 263-37 COR. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place Bill Number 263-37 as amended by the Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture, sponsored by William A. Parkinson, an act to transfer lot number 3458-R1 in the municipality of Chanpago Orde Guam, from the Department of Parks and Recreation to the office of the Chanpago Orde mayor in a third reading, and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, ma'am. First and halfway colleagues, Bill Number 263-37 COR is a measure rooted in service to the people of Chanpago Orde and the ongoing commitment to a community-driven development. This bill proposes transferring lot number 3458-R1 from the Department of Parks and Rec to the office of the Chanpago Orde mayor. This lot is home to the Jose Uatoigu Memorial Baseball Park, the site of the community center, and the new multipurpose recreation and emergency center under construction. As noted in the committee report, this transfer will ensure that the mayor's office can continue enhancing these facilities to meet the needs of the community effectively. Key benefits include expanded authority: the mayor's office will gain full control over the property, enabling it to implement projects like the additional parking, a playground, and a community garden. Compliance with federal funding: the transfer satisfies federal requirements tied to the $10 million multi-purpose center project funded by the Office of Local Defense, Community Cooperation, and USDA Rural Development. This leads to improved coordination: it prevents disruption from uncoordinated actions by other agencies, such as past streetlight disconnections and land severance issues. By having it under the purview of the mayor, we have a much more centralized and organized way to handle these connected issues. Some might question why this transfer is necessary. The reality is that without this change, the mayor's office cannot ensure uninterrupted progress on these vital projects. For example, during the grant application for federal funding, it became clear that ownership ambiguity threatened the project's approval and long-term success. This bill resolves that ambiguity, paving the way for growth and community resilience. This measure is strongly supported by the Chanpago Orde mayor and municipal planning council. Their testimony during the public hearing highlighted how this bill directly addresses community challenges and creates opportunities for development. Their leadership has been instrumental in bringing these projects to life. Colleagues, this is an investment in the future of Chanpago Orde. It ensures that community-driven initiatives can flourish, and that village remains a hub for recreation, emergency response, and cultural enrichment. I urge my colleagues to please support Bill Number 263-37 COR. Sí, señor presidente, and thank you. I yield the rest of my time, Madam Speaker.
Sí, señor presidente. Senator Parkinson, on the bills, are there any senator who'd like to be recognized? On the motion, Speaker Teresh, you are recognized at this time. Please proceed. On the motion, Speaker Teresh, you are recognized at this time. Please proceed.
Sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker, and I'd like to stand in support of Bill 263. This bill transfers a property to the mayor of Orde Chalampago, Mayor Gogui's jurisdiction, and the new mayor's jurisdiction going forward. This property, part of it comprised of the baseball field, was already transferred to their jurisdiction, but the bigger lot remained under the control of Parks and Rec., and it seems like there was some confusion whether it was also part of Chamor Land Trust. But due to the mayor's diligence and resourcefulness, he has really done something remarkable. He has taken what the previous legislatures dedicated to the communities of Orde Chalampago, thanks to the legislation by one of our colleagues, Senator Taitagui and others, where they receive money as the host communities for the Orde dump, for the Orde in the Lahan landfill. These communities receive money from the general fund. And this mayor took that money and has pledged it to transform and build in his community a huge community center that's going to serve as a typhoon shelter, a storm shelter. It's going to serve, of course, community recreation purposes, community civic function purposes. It's really going to be a benefit to our entire community of Guam, because if we have a storm shelter like that, we do not have to close schools. And that was all part of his vision. And took the money and instead of spending it every single day, as it's been appropriated, has kind of banked it, pledged it, and got millions of dollars in funding to build these facilities. And he's worked with previous legislatures, federal government, our governor, and other entities to ensure that this project was going to go forward. And I'm just very impressed with how he had the fortitude to stick through that, because it has taken years, but we have seen the groundbreaking on it. And I'm just so very happy for the people of Orde Chalampago and the people of Guam, because his vision was bigger than just one village or two villages. His vision is going to assist all of us. That's what this center that he is building is going to really do. And so our part today is to just make sure that there are no further impediments to him in this project, and that the title is clear, that his jurisdiction to pledge use of this property for this is clear, so that none of the federal entities can question anymore whether, you know, the mayor can use this property for this partially federally funded project. And again, I want to thank the people of Orde Chalampago for really hosting our community's landfill for all those years, and the money that they are receiving as host community, and that they continued to, you know, suffer the consequences of having the Orde facility there in their village for all of those years, that, you know, we can't take that back, but we are hopefully going to facilitate the benefits to their community from, at least the funding that they receive and this property now, and that they will continue to excel in how they are using it for their community in their recreational programs. They've never stopped. And I want to just take this time to commend Mayor Gogui for that vision, for his hard work, for his diligence, and his really, he's been creative, and I really admire that. He's been creative in how to pave the roads in some of the villages where DPW will not pave. He's taken some of the used asphalt that's been torn up and asked them to lay it down in other areas, or brought it himself and laid it down in other areas. He's done so many creative things in his village, and we are really going to miss him as the mayor of Orde Chalampago. And he has really left, I think, a legacy for our entire island to admire, to follow, to aspire to. That creativity, thinking outside, way outside the box, taking some funding and putting it really to the future. He pledged it, he saved it, he is using it, going to use it now to, I don't know, triple, quadruple, really, its effect by getting loans and other grants. And I want to commend the entire Municipal Planning Council of Orde Chalampago for this work, and of course, the author of the bill for moving this forward, because this is really, removes all impediments that he was facing. So again, thank you to the mayor of Orde Chalampago and the community of Orde Chalampago, the Municipal Planning Council, and be but to that mayor, let's move that project forward, and hopefully, the changes that we've made to this bill make it crystal clear. So sí, señor presidente.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Barnett, then Senator Taitagui.
Sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker, be but goodness again to the people of Guam. I rise in support of the bill and also just wanted to speak highly of outgoing Mayor Jesse Gogui. When I was in Caye Waya many years ago, I remember interviewing him in the old mayor's office over there by Agarajonston, which has now been closed up, and he had laid out the architecture, design plans, and shared with me, as it was in a story that I reported, how he got creative in utilizing grant funding. So I want to commend him on that effort. I remember attending the ribbon cutting for the new office and the community center that he opened, and hearing even more about the plans for this endeavor. And, you know, Mayor Gogui has done a great job in being creative and shaking the tree and kind of getting money from the feds and different grant opportunities, and so have other mayors. I know that Mayor Hoffman has also done the same in San Anya, so I just wanted to rise in support of the measure and also encourage and share with the mayors that it's very commendable that they seek these alternative funding sources for the betterment of their villages, and in turn, benefits really serve the residents of their respective villages, and in this case specifically, Orde Chalampago. Sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker.
Sí, señor presidente. Senator Barnett, Senator Taitagui, you are recognized.
Sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker. I too stand in full support of this legislation. I know that Mayor Gogui has done so much for his village. You know, it's ironic, because it was back then in the 30th Guam legislature, and then legislature, that I wrote the bill, the host community bill, to provide this funding to both Inilahen and Chalampago. And Mayor Gogui actually was my classmate. In fact, he was my class president at GW. So we graduated together, and we knew each other quite well. And I remember how he spoke of wanting to do this project and utilizing that money. And of course, every three years, he comes to me to remind us that there's a certain percentage that I incorporated in the legislation that would increase through inflation. And he brings that up every single time I see him. Even when I was out of the legislature for about eight years, he still brings it up to my attention even today, and that's something I think I'll start looking into the next term. But he was getting a lot of ridicule about holding on to this money. The community wanted, you know, to build a new basketball court. They wanted to fix the lights at the baseball field. His office was really, really in disarray. But he was stern, bit stubborn, you know, and that's, I guess, what you need, to stay the course, to see something in the future that's really going to make a difference. And like you said, Madam Speaker, it's not just to benefit Chalampago. That area is to be set up for many other people to participate and enjoy. They can have theater there, they can have shows. And one of the most important things, yes, in typhoon times, where not only Chalampago, but Sanahanya, the neighboring villages, Manila, can all utilize that facility, because it's huge. So I too commend, you know, Mayor Gogui on the work he's done, and being stern and stubborn, and keeping the course to find additional funding for this project. And I just hope, and I'm pretty sure he will stay on time, but I just hope the next mayor that is taking over his position, that he will see this project through. I'm sure Mayor Gogui's not going anywhere, and he'll probably be, hopefully, he'll be part of the commission, the municipal council commission. It would be a good idea, in fact, to put him on that, to see this project through. But, tell you the truth, Madam Speaker, when I wrote that legislation, I never imagined something so grand to come out of it. It took how many years? About 10 years to do it, but it just shows that we need to think ahead. And we're here today of something that I'm very proud of myself, but most especially, the credit is due to Mayor Gogui. So thank you, Madam Speaker, and stand in full support and ask Senator Parkinson if I could co-sponsor the legislation as well.
Sí, señor presidente. Senator Taitagui, Vice Speaker, Mueny Barnett, you're recognized.
Well, thank goodness, sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to speak on this Bill number 263-37, sponsored by the good senator from MTM, Senator Parkinson. And I too extend a ditto, ditto, ditto to the retiring senator, Senator Taitagui, and you, Madam Speaker, for supporting this efforts, and Senator Barnett for supporting these efforts, because it took a mayor who envisioned and saw a vision about how the resources that he had received for the community, how he could literally build a place where people could go to. And he was able to secure federal grants to be used to construct the community sites, the facility that's there, and continue to work closely with the surrounding areas, including the baseball field that I'm very much used to literally play there, both softball and baseball. But my hat's off to the mayor for seeing this vision and knowing that if he could gather, do, work with the community, work with the government, work with the federal government to secure those grants, and get these facilities built, and continue to build upon it, it literally is, this bill literally affords the opportunity to give the jurisdiction to the Chalampago mayor's office. I do know that Mayor Gogui is retiring, and I do know that the incoming mayor will continue. He's got big shoes to fill, but I know that he'll do just, he's very young, and I know that he will do just great of a job. But Mayor Gogui literally needs to be congratulated, and the Municipal Planning Council, because they worked closely together to get these facilities going. So I literally, Madam Speaker, want to thank the author for helping see this vision and wanting to make sure that it gets facilitated through, so that if there's additional resources that is needed from, whether it be the federal government or other grants that are out there, that the mayor's office and the municipal planning council can ascertain, then this is the way of doing it and making sure it's secured. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of 263-37, and I thank the good author from MTM for making this happen. So sí, señor presidente.
Sí, señor presidente. Sí, señor presidente. On the bills, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? Senator Perez, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of this bill, and I would like to also congratulate Mayor Gogui for his years of hard work to really revitalize Orde Chalampago community. And I think when we put the power in the hands of our community, good things happen. And I really think that, you know, this is a long time coming. And we really need to recognize the efforts and the commitment by people in our community to really make Guam a better place. And I rise in support of this amendment, of this bill, and, you know, thank the good mayor for all his hard work. I mean, he's seen, he's been through a lot, from the Orde dump closure to just really making positive changes within his community. And we need to support these kind of efforts going on, going forward. And thank you.
Sí, señor presidente. Senator Perez, on the bill, Senator Duñez, you're recognized.
Sí, señor presidente, Madam Speaker, and I want to join the chorus in standing up to lend my full support to this measure and support this bill. Madam Speaker, we've seen really a lot of mayors now who have taken real ownership of their villages, and when they have these properties under their jurisdiction, we think of Inilahen in particular. I mean, it's just amazing what's been happening down there and other villages as well. I know my mayor in Timuning and Sanahanya as well, they've, any land under the jurisdiction, they've really maintained well. So I think this is a very fitting thing to do, particularly with the efforts of Mayor Gogui. Madam Speaker, I know you probably joined me, and really, I want to recognize Mayor Gogui as well. For a long time in the mayor's council, he has been the, you know, the legislative liaison, if you will, or doing write-ups on bills that affect mayors and the like, and I would review his work, and he should be here. Because, you know, he's just really detailed, really effective, and with his experience over the years and his experience with the federal government and different areas that he's worked in with. He's just always been really one of those mayors that, very detail-oriented, and even when you meet him in passing, when he needs something, you know, pulls you aside, he'll give you a real, you know, detailed information of what's needed, and, you know, he's very, been a very effective mayor. I think Guam has been fortunate to have him. Certainly, OCP has been very fortunate to have him. And so, you know, for that reason, I wanted to use this opportunity once again to put it on the record of this legislature that Mayor Gogui, you know, you've done a fine job, and you've served very honorably and very well. You will be missed. You will not only be missed in the village of Orde Chalampago, but you will also be missed, you know, I think, by many residents of Guam for your activism. He also, from time to time, particularly when he's fired up about something, is not shy to jump on the radio and talk and be in the media, you know, and that's the kind of thing that is just special about a lot of our mayors. But he exemplified, you know, that quality and the ability to communicate, not just with his villagers, but the entire island of Guam. So a well, a well-do retirement for you, Mayor Gogui, but I'm sure you're not done yet, many more things to do going forward. But God bless you, and Merry Christmas to you and your family, and hopefully, this will be your Christmas gift as you leave, one of them, as you leave your office, to have this bill passed and signed into law. Sí, señor presidente, Madam Chair.
Sí, señor presidente. Senator, on the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be heard? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask my colleagues once again to please support Bill number 263-37 to empower the mayors and the future mayors to provide this service to our community. I feel very strongly about this, because when I was a young man, and I had all the unspent energy and passions of a young man, I found that the best place I was able to channel those energies in a productive way and to stay out of trouble was to basically live on the basketball courts of this island. Grew up on the basketball courts of this island. And I grew up in a very particular time. I'm an elder millennial, so, you know, I grew up watching Pokemon. So for all my Pokemon fans out there, please bear with me on this story. But, you know, in Pokemon, they had this concept where they would train up, and then they would go to different gyms and challenge the best of the different gyms, and, you know, it was a cool story. And me and my friends, we were inspired by that, you know, but we took it away from Pokemon, and we took it to basketball. And so we practiced basketball every day, worked really hard, got as good as we possibly can. And we went around the island, and we challenged the other basketball teams. And we went around the island and we challenged other basketball teams on other basketball gyms, just going from Agania Heights, Senahania, to Chalampago Orde, to Timuning, to Jigo, everywhere along the island. So, I truly appreciate the speaker's comments when she says that these sports facilities are not just for Chalampago Orde, but they're for the whole island. Because I could personally attest that the sports facilities all over the island were where I grew up. And so, I feel a strong passion to make sure that they are taken care of in the hands of good stewards. And I appreciate the comments of a lot of my colleagues because, you know, this is an important piece of legislation. I find that it is a symbol of the good that government can do, that it shows that government can be a force for improving our community and it is not always a negative thing. And I think that's just such a wonderful thing to have that example shining out to the community. And, you know, this bill is not about me. This bill is really about we. This is about all of us. So, to that end, I'd like to make a motion right now to add all members of the legislature as co-sponsors to this bill.
On that motion, is there any objection? Would that be in alphabetical order, sir?
In whatever order you like, ma'am. Yes.
Could you please clarify your motion?
I would like to, I would like to add, I would like to add Senator Telotaitegui, Senator Tina Munia Barnes, and then the rest of the Guam Legislature as co-sponsors on the legislation. They asked first, so.
On that motion, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries.
And, you know, before I close up, I know I said it's not about me, but about we, but it's not even really about we. It's also about Mayor Gogui. You know, this, this fine gentleman has dedicated his life to improving his community. And even though it is my name as the primary sponsor of the bill, he is really the primary sponsor of this bill. I'm just a messenger delivering it here to the people's chamber, but this is really the work of this great mayor. And all the credit really belongs to him for seeing this project through and being such a beacon for government effectiveness and improvement of our communities. So, thank you to the outgoing Mayor Gogui. And I appreciate the efforts of the incoming mayor to advocate for this as well. I've found that moment really beautiful because I've always thought that the work of government is not about any particular individual. We are all stewards for the time that we're here. And any work that I don't get done, I will be passing the baton forward. And it was very heartening to see that when one mayor's time finished, another was ready to pick up the baton and continue the good work. Because the work of improving our island doesn't all happen overnight. It happens day by day by day incrementally with all of us knocking on doors that won't open until they do. And so, I appreciate the mayor, I appreciate the work of the outgoing mayor. I myself cannot wait till the new facilities go up and see what kind of challenges and recreation we could have there. You know, as a parent myself, I want my kids to have the same things I had. You know, I want, I actually had a conversation my very first time running for Senator, at the time with former Senator Regina Biscoli. And I had once asked her, you know, if you can make a wish happen for the 12-year-old version of you as legislation, what would it be? And she told me hers, you know, she had a thing for the arts. And for me, I told her that if I could satisfy one wish for my 12-year-old self, it would be that all the facilities have proper lights, all the kids have facilities to play basketball, baseball, have the lights, have the, have the facilities painted and maintained just so that kids stay out of trouble, they have something positive to do. It was such a benefit for me and for all my friends that I want to make sure that every person on this island has that. And so, this legislation, not by me, not by we, but really by Mayor Gogui, is a step in that right direction. So, I ask once again from my colleagues to please support this legislation. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to add this bill to the third reading.
On the motion to place the bill in third reading as amended by the committee and amended on the floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We're now on bill number 272-37COR. Senator Perez, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move to place bill 272-37COR as introduced by the committee on Environment, Revenue, Taxation, Procurement, Labor Statistics Research and Planning to the third reading file and I wish to discuss.
Please proceed.
Bill 272-37 aims to update the current law by clarifying that agencies have the option to provide procurement records in a portable document format or PDF that can be transmitted electronically in place of hard copies. Current law predates the widespread of the use of Internet and subsequent technological advances. And moreover, agencies continue to provide hard copies of procurement records upon request despite the widespread use of electronic communications. Needless to say, electronic copies will enhance efficiency of dissemination, retention of procurement records. Government agencies are required to retain the procurement records for a minimum of five years before they can be disposed of, resulting in storage accommodations to house records and many of which are hundreds upon hundreds of pages of communications specifications, certifications, and other documents relevant to procurement. Bill 272 could potentially lighten the arduousness of exclusively maintaining hard copies and lessen the waste and the cost of exclusively providing hard copies to each request of a procurement record. And bill 272 authorizes establishing a process to encode searchable PDFs to facilitate their review, which promotes transparency of expenditure of government funds and taxpayers' dollars to ensure a fair ethical practice. I want to thank my co-sponsors, Speaker Terese Terlahi, Senators Chris Barnett, Roy Abikanata, and Jesse Lohan, and I ask for further support from my colleagues on this measure. Sisusmasi.
Sisusmasi, Senator. On the bill, is there anyone who'd like to be recognized on the bill? On the bill, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I promise I'll make this short. I just want to say I stand and rise in support of this bill. This bill is authored by the good Senator, from Baragada, I guess. Literally is to create rules to retain and share government procurement records as PDF files. And I know that when the Director of Administration, Director Burns testified, he testified in support of this measures and also noted that the, that DOA already uses and stores files as PDFs with the new FMIS system. And this bill, I guess, just puts a lot of clarification into the promoting transparency and efficiency in this, in our government of Guam. So, I will rise in support and thank the good author for pushing this measure forward. Sina Masie.
Sina Masie. Vice Speaker on the bill, any Senator who'd like to be recognized? Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker. I rise in support of the bill as it's yet another good effort from the author to chip away at some of the procurement issues that face our government. This bill is very simple. It expands the options for obtaining the procurement record, which is defined in our law as the date, time, subject matter, and names of participants at any meeting, including government employees that is in any way related to a particular procurement. Also, it includes a log of all communications between government employees and any member of the public, potential bidder, vendor, or manufacturer, which is in any way related to the procurement. It also includes sound recordings of all pre-bid conferences, negotiations arising from a request for proposal and discussions with vendors concerning small purchase procurement, as well as brochures and submittals of potential vendors, manufacturers, or contractors, and all drafts signed and dated by the draftsman and other papers or materials used in the development of specifications. And it also requests, it also includes the requesting agency's determination of need. So, generally speaking, the bill is going to make it considerably easier for all parties, such as bidders and potential bidders, to get an after-the-fact history of each procurement solicitation, which again goes a long way towards ensuring accountability and transparency with our procurement policies and practices. So, thank the author for its introduction and also grateful to be included as a co-sponsor, Madam Speaker. Sisusmasi.
Just checking with audio, are we still okay? Okay, we're all right. So, is there any other Senator who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would like to make one amendment to make, add co-sponsors. So, Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, Senator Barnett, and all Senators of the 37th Guam Legislature if they do not, if they agree to it.
On that motion to add co-sponsors, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries.
So, in closing, bill 272 aims to improve the accessibility of procurement records by providing in statute options for dissemination through searchable PDF formats. It helps to lessen waste by reducing the need for physical storage space of hard copies that are vulnerable to the elements and expenses related to such storage. The benefits are a win-win for both the public and the government by promoting efficiencies through electronic storage and subsequent dissemination towards creating a fair and transparent process in how the government spends vital taxpayer funds. And I thank my colleagues for their support. Sisusmasi.
Sisusmasi, Senator. On that motion to place the bill in the third reading as amended by the, as amended on the floor, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We are now on bill number 276-37LS. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker, I'd like to make a motion to place bill 276-37LS in the third reading file and I'd like to discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you. It's a very simple bill. It requires written reports of the superintendent of the Guam Department of Education that are presented to the Guam Board of Education to be posted on the Guam Department of Education's website. And what this bill does is it provides easier access to the public information that's available through FOIA, but they won't have to send a FOIA, they could just click on the GDOE website. Publicly accessible reports to the board include status reports from the superintendent, financial reports, confidential reports to the board for student issues and personnel matters are normally discussed in executive session, and nothing in the bill dictates that that type of information would be posted on GDOE's website. The bill also requires that confidential information be redacted prior to posting of the reports. And the bill gives the Guam Department of Education five calendar days to post the reports. And, you know, it was interesting during the public hearing, the superintendent, Superintendent Swanson, had proffered that they were already posting reports from the board, but upon further examination and going through the GDOE website, I found that that wasn't the case at all. And so, what the bill does is again, it mandates these reports that the superintendent gives to the board. And many times, we here in the legislature, and especially those members of the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts, are able to receive these reports prior to the monthly oversight hearings that we have held. And what I've found many times is that a lot of this information that we're discussing, which has been shared with the board, whether in a board meeting or other types of discussion, these documents and this material, this data, this information is not readily available for the public. And so, this again, it just provides easier access for the people of Guam to look at these documents, which many times include very detailed reports from the superintendent. So, in case you didn't know, usually he starts every board meeting with a superintendent's report that kind of just runs down the gamut of compliance with the Adequate Education Act, and then includes other updates, you know, more recently, updates about a temporary Simon Sanchez, classroom updates about the status of the AC vendor installation and repair, just really a lot of information that I think is relevant and the people of Guam deserve to have access to this information. And again, although the superintendent had initially said that there, we're already doing this, when we kind of discussed it further, and you could see it in the committee report and the testimony, he eventually agreed that the law is necessary and that also, he had said that they're working on clearing up the GDOE website because there are some documents given to the board that are posted on the website, but the navigation, I mean, you're going to go keetan trying to find these documents. So, I'm hoping that we pass this law and that, and I believe the revamping of the websites either being put out to a bid or is already underway. And so, I hope that we get this law passed and then they're able to kind of mesh the new design of the website with the posting of these reports. So, this information can be truly accessible to all of the public school stakeholders across the district. And so, it's a very simple bill and I pray my colleagues will support it. Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker.
Sisusmasi, Senator. On the bill, Vice Speaker, you are recognized.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak very briefly in support of this measure 276-37. And as the author of the legislation spoke about the, to increase the transparency by posting all reports of the superintendent to the Guam DOE website. You know, sometimes, Madam Speaker, and unless you specifically delineate what should be posted and whatnot, it won't get. So, sometimes you literally just have to state it. And in this, in this case, after the retiring speaker just said, you know, after further look into the situation about this already being done, it wasn't really done, so it doesn't hurt. And if we're here to literally promote transparency, this bill is a good bill to make sure that it is done and make sure that the community is apprised of everything that goes on with our educational system. So, I rise in support of this measure and appreciate the good author for putting this measure through. Sisusmasi.
Sisusmasi. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? If not, then the sponsor may close on the bill.
Sisusmasi to my colleagues for their support of the measure and also to the retiring speaker for speaking so highly of the bill, which again, it's literally just a one-pager. And I'll just go ahead and read it out. All reports of the superintendent to the Guam Board of Education that are required by public law, the Guam Administrative Rules and regs, Guam Education Board policy, as a condition of receipt of grants and aid, as a condition of contract or at the request of the Guam Education Board, shall be posted on the GDOE website within five days after a report is officially transmitted to the board, except those reports, as I had mentioned, that are confidential pursuant to public law. Board packets from each board meeting should also be posted on the GDOE website within five days after each board meeting. Again, with confidential information contained in any report or board packet that contains public information shall be redacted prior to the report being posted on the website. And Madam Speaker, I'd like this time to make a motion to add any of my colleagues as co-sponsors. Vice Speaker Tina Munia Barnes, Speaker Terese Terlahi, Senator Telotaitegui, and anyone else who, is anybody? Senator Frank Blas? Yeah, it's good, who's here? Thank you, thank you. The ones that are actually here. Thank you.
On that motion to add sponsors, Munia Barnes, Terlahi, Taitegui, Blas, Brown, Duennias, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sisusmasi, Madam Speaker, I motion to place bill number 279-37. into the third reading file.
On that motion to place the bill as amended on the floor to the third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. We are now on Bill number 279-37LS. Senator Barnett, you are recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, I motion to place Bill number 279-37LS into the third reading file and I would like to discuss.
Please proceed.
Okay. First of all, I'd like to thank all of my colleagues for their very generous support of this measure, which is an act to add a new subsection 849-17, a chapter eight, title one, GCA, relative to renaming the Hoggett Southern Precinct as the Jose T. Pito Strelahi Police Station. And again, this is also an equally simple bill, but with a very deep meaning as the bill seeks to honor the life of the late Senator Jose T. Pito Strelahi, a life that includes nearly six decades of public service to our island and our people as a Vietnam veteran, retired police officer, Director of Civil Defense, of course, former mayor of Zonia Rools, a candidate for Lieutenant Governor with the late Angit Santos, and of course, a member of Illes Latour and Guahan. I want to thank everybody who came out to testify in support of the bill. I know that one of my colleagues had expressed some concern about opposition for the bill, but we did not receive any testimony at any time opposing the measure, Madam Speaker. And so I thank again my colleagues for their support of this and I ask that we pass the measure so that we can honor the life and legacy of the late Senator Jose Pito T. Strelahi, who obviously many colleagues in here had the honor and the pleasure of serving with the late Senator. And so I seek their support for this measure. Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker.
Sidozmasi, Senator Barnett, on the bill, Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak on this measure, Bill number 279-37LS. And I really want to take the time, Madam Speaker, to extend my uncle, Sidozmasi, to the author, Chris Barnett, for literally giving me the opportunity to be a part of the co-sponsorship for this measure. This measure's intent to rename the Southern Police Precinct in Hoggett to honor a former Senator Pito Strelahi. To honor former Senator Jose Strelahi, who was, like the good author said, literally had decades of service from being a police officer, Vietnam vet. His entire life, Madam Speaker, even in this bill, was dedicated, Senator Pito Strelahi, dedicated his life to public safety and true service, not just to his village of Zonia Rools, but to the people of Guam. Very, very good man. And I know that when I was looking over the report, the report says that this bill poses no fiscal impact on the government funds. But here we are to literally give honor and tribute to a good colleague who we served with, that served. And that was what his life was all about. His wife was a great supporter, Madam Speaker. I think he has four or five generations of family members in law enforcement and service to the community in protecting our island. And his children, his grandchildren, just the majority of the members of his family and his extended family have been about protecting our island of Guam and the love that he had. So to the good author of this legislation, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be one of the co-sponsors. And I know, Uncle Pito, you're up there in heaven watching over us and always saying in your heart that, "Bastante, let's just work together and do right for our people." So Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak in support of this measure and also want to thank the members of the Aggett community who did come and speak in support of, inclusive of the Vice Mayor, who was there at the public hearing, and the whole family and folks in the community that came to support this effort. Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and sign him on see.
Sidozmasi, Vice Speaker, on the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized? Senator Tytegui, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity. And, you know, I actually served with Senator Strelahi in the 35th, as well as the 36th Guam Legislature. You know, it was a pleasure, you know, serving with him. When times got real tense and tough, you know, all you had to do is look over at Pito and he would say something really funny to crack everybody up and break the, you know, the tension between us. There were times he was very, he's very quiet, a very quiet man. And when this bill came out, explained of all the, all the things he's done in his, in his career, and it was very impressive. That's why when we had this public hearing, I was a senator who had some concerns with moving this bill forward without, you know, making sure we had the input from the Municipal Council of Hoggett, which this facility is located, that would be named after him if this bill passes. You know, of course, all of Zonia was there during the public hearing, so we had no doubt that, you know, Zonia was in full support of naming this. But this precinct serves the whole entire South. So it's not just Zonia or Hoggett, it's Inalahan, it's Humatak as well, the southern part. Talafofu. So I wanted to make sure that we had everyone's input from all those other villages that serve this precinct so that when it comes time to name this building, it was done openly, transparently, and done with every good feeling that's needed so that there would be no repercussions or anyone making comments like this was ram-rodded through the legislature because there might be some connections in here. That's what we don't want to see. We want to make sure that when this building is named, it was done with not just this body, but the community. The community in which serves, this building will serve, used to serve the, our southern part of our island. The bill was introduced in May, May 13th, 2024 of this year. And the reason why I'm giving that date is because once this bill goes out, you know, it's, it's out there for the public. Mayors have seen it, some mayors have seen it. And people who are, and I don't know if there was a press release, I was hoping there's a press release that was put out regarding this, this bill so that the public will know that this bill is out. But it definitely had its public hearing how many months later? Quite a bit, May, June, July, August, September, October. And it was just, had a public hearing, if I'm not mistaken, in November, right after the election. And during that public hearing, the Vice Mayor of Hoggett was there. And he was in, actually, he was in support of it. He came up front and said he was in support of it. But he did hear from a couple people in his community that they weren't aware of this and wanted to speak about it. So the good author of the legislation allowed at least 10 days for the public to come forward to make any comments or suggestions or emails. Well, I received an email actually, prior to it, from a resident in Hoggett, opposing it. And then I received another email after the public hearing, about, about a week after the public hearing, also a lady opposing it too as well, saying that there's a lot of controversy behind this. And... So when the author of the legislation, I'd just like to ask, has there been any, any other letters of, not in support, objection of this legislation that he received from the time that he had the public hearing, which was in November, until now?
Senator Tytegui, it was mentioned, but I will yield back to Senator Barnett to reiterate what he stated earlier. Senator Barnett, would you like to yield?
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to yield to the question. We have not received any testimony opposing the bill. It is true that the Vice Mayor of Hoggett had kind of hinted at some opposition to the bill. But again, the Committee on Education, Public Safety, and the Arts has received no testimony. And if the proffer or the question had received emails or letters, you know, would have appreciated if it had been provided to the committee. But again, we have received no testimony. I haven't gotten even a phone call from anybody who says that they oppose this because like you had said, Madam Speaker, in your remarks, although the precinct is in Hoggett, the late Senator Pito served the South and our entire island. So Sidozmasi, Madam.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Tytegui, you still have the floor. Does that suffice?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Speaker. And thank you to the author for, for letting us know that he received no complaints or no objections to this legislation. And the reason why I'm being very cautious about that is that once they have that ribbon cutting for that building, to name that building after Senator, former Senator Pito Strelahi, we want to make it a happy and joyous occasion, not something that has any, you know, animosity or a bunch of people coming to protest. That's the last thing we want to do. But it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we've done everything we can to reach out to the community, especially the southern side of the community, to let them know that this has been proffered and if they have any objections. So we're doing it the proper way by opening it up for the public. The bill was introduced since May, beginning of this year. And the good author of the legislation hasn't received anything. And I heard comments, but Vice Mayor promised he would talk to the Municipal Council and find out if there's any concerns and get back to the chairman. And he has mentioned there hasn't been. So that's good to hear. So when it comes time to have that celebration of the naming and recognition of Senator, former Senator Pito Strelahi, and putting on that name, then there shouldn't be any issues or anybody making a joyous occasion like this for his family to feel that it's not deserving. So I just wanted to make it clear out there for those who are listening that the process has moved and will be moving forward. It's on this floor. We opened it up for anyone to bring any concerns. So other than that, Madam Speaker, I thank you for the opportunity to speak on this measure.
Thank you. You're welcome. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on this measure? If not, Senator Barnett, would you like to close?
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker. And again, I thank my colleagues for their support of the measure and also thank the retiring speaker for sharing her concerns about the bill, which followed all of the processes that we lay out here in the legislature. The bill was introduced in May, that is accurate. We didn't have the public hearing until after the election because as you guys know, there was a whole lot going on with our committee, especially with the schools. And so we were able to hear the bill. The bill received a lot of favorable testimony. And again, for the record, I have not received any testimony against this measure. But you know, I thank the retiring speaker for doing her due diligence and really raising these issues. As we all know in here, we introduce a bill and usually the media covers that and then we announce the public hearing. And it's those opportunities where the people of Guam can come and engage with the legislature and share their concerns about not just this bill, but any bill that we introduce. And you know, I said as much in the public hearing that I was going to continue to accept testimony on the bill. And the only testimony received was testimony in support of the measure. Because again, I believe that that's the case because the late Senator Pito served, served with honor and served so many people, not just in the South. So I commend everyone who came out to speak in support of the bill, most especially the family of the late Senator Uncle Pito Strelahi. And I thank my colleagues for this, the support of this measure, Madam Speaker. Sidozmasi. And I'd like to motion to place this bill in the third reading file for voting.
On the motion to place the bill on third reading, is there any objection? Seeing no objection, that motion carries. All right, we'll now take a break, a recess for lunch until 2:00 PM. So recess until 2:00 PM.